I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for May 11th, 2021 at 6:46 PM. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your patience. For the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. The city upgraded its Zoom software so it allows us to easily conduct events with a simpler interface in a professional setting. There are two groups of participants. Those are panelists and attendees. Panelists are those you will see on the platform such as elected officials, the city administrator, city attorney, and any staff or person making a presentation. Attendees are those in the audience. Attendees will still be able to speak for three minutes during business from the audience or during agenda items if they submitted their request to speak before a name today or during our public hearing. Additionally, if matters of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the April 13th, 2021 council meeting minutes, approval of the March bank balances, budget report for period ending 3, or excuse me, March 31st, 2021, approval of the March check register, legal costs on projects, and department head monthly reports for April 2021. Our regular meeting agenda includes Resolution 1192, which is the implementation of a Meldrum Bar Park parking fee for non-residents, a public hearing for ordinance 1511, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, Chapter 10.04 to regulate parking upon public property controlled by the city, Clackamas Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Work Project Contract, and Title 17 zoning code relating to the Gladstone Municipal Code rewrite project contract. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Counselor Ripley.
Here.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. Next is the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So first, we're going to start with a presentation from our Metro Counselor Christine Lewis, who's going to give us updates on our regional priorities. Is she on the meeting?
She's coming on right now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you tonight. And thanks for the ability to talk a little bit about our regional priorities, but I also hope that it's a conversation if there are things you're working on that I could be helpful in advocating for or otherwise just in conversation about shared interests. I will try and speak a little quickly to help you catch up to your agenda timeline, but wanted to just start with what is Metro? I know some of you from being with you in the council chambers in years past, but others of you, this is my first introduction. So I want to start by saying, you know, the metro region is big and vast, and I'm really privileged to get to represent the best part of it. I represent Lake Oswego, West Lynn, Gladstone, Oregon City, unincorporated Clackamas and Milwaukee, in addition to a little slice of southwest Portland. Our region is big and diverse. It extends from Forest Grove to Troutdale and from the Columbia River all the way down to Wilsonville. And we have five key areas that we work on: visitor venues, garbage and recycling, long-range planning, affordable housing, and we manage 17,000 acres of parks in nature. So in addition to the venues that I noted, we do run the Oregon Zoo, so I want to start there. We have persevered throughout this pandemic and a lot of shutdowns and disappointments. And we are not fully operational, but we're up and going at the zoo. And we're very excited to have welcomed back Nora, the polar bear cub. And that's really exciting news for folks who remember her, but also just for folks like myself who have kids that want to get out of the house. So starting with the fact that we operate the zoo and we are pushing through our limited capacity, but we are open and running things there. We're also a national leader in condor conservation. We're one of four facilities across the whole country, the western region, that's helping bring back the condor from the brink of extinction. So that's something we can really be proud of. And then I did note that we manage five facilities at P5. We run the Oregon Convention Center and the Expo Center. So between P5 being shut down along with all the other performing arts venues and then Oregon Convention Center and Expo not hosting a lot of their mainline shows, Metro's been through a lot the past year. We laid off a number of staff. It was very difficult, but we are delighted to be part of the collaboration that's going on in COVID with our healthcare networks, both at Expo doing testing, but then at the Oregon Convention Center, originally doing some testing and now moving into vaccine distribution. Oregon Convention Center was also key in hosting shelter during the wildfires last summer. So really proud of the work that our team has been able to do and be part of the response to these disasters. Moving on, I just wanted to touch a little bit on what we're working on in garbage and recycling. So our role is in managing the system and the system investments. Obviously, cities and the county work directly with the haulers for the point of service and for the customer side, but we help manage the system to make sure that we are getting things out of the region as efficiently as possible. And in doing so, we're also making sure that as much as possible, we're putting things back in either through recycling or reuse into the stream and not putting it into waste. So we've got a number of system investments, including an innovation, to try and make those goals a reality. One of the things that we have to continue to bring up is the only thing that makes recycling possible is that we have a clean flow of recyclable products. So please help spread the word that if something is kind of wishy-washy, you hope it's recyclable, but you can't find a clear guide that it's recyclable, better safe than sorry, and actually put that in the trash. We're working advocacy at the state level to help make it more clear what is actually recyclable and what is not, because those three chasing arrows end up on a lot of products that aren't recyclable. And then in terms of what you're probably hearing the most about in Gladstone, we run Metro South, and that is a fantastic facility that I've visited myself, I think, two or three times in the past year as I've been taking on some home projects and needing to get rid of things. So I've been a self-hall customer there. And I've noticed myself what we are coming up against, which is this is an aged facility, thirty-some-plus-years-old. It was not built for the kind of capacity needs that it sees, the strains it sees every day. We are in the process of investigating moving all or some of those services to another site in Clackamas County in the southeast portion of the region to make sure that we're able to protect, you know, the work that we do and our workers, because right now you have commercial and self-hall having to cross paths, but also just to make it a better user experience. We've been doing a number of outreach activities. You might have heard about what we're thinking for the future of Metro South. Again, no decision has been reached. We're still definitely in the investigatory stage, but we are investigating one particular site on Jennifer Street just out east. So that's something of note and a process to follow if you are interested. I'm happy to follow up more in Q and A or offline. Moving on from garbage and recycling, long-range planning. We manage the metro region's urban growth boundary, and we work on the region's long-range transportation plans to make sure they meet federal pollution rules and bring all of our roads and transportation systems up to the kind of standards we want to see. We are doing a lot of work right now to make sure that our research and report on congestion pricing is getting out into the world. I can email it to your city manager to make sure that you all have our congestion pricing report that is still being developed, but the initial findings, I'm really proud of the fact that they've made people start to pay attention at the state level to the diversion that we know will happen from the 205 tolling conversation. Additionally, we are having the conversation gearing up for our next round of regional flexible funds. Regional flexible funds happens on a three-year cycle. It feels like we just went through the three-year cycle, and here we are later this fall, setting the table for the next round of applications for how we're going to spend our federal dollars here in the region. And that can be on everything from bike and pet improvements to freight improvements. And they're on our local streets. These are not highway improvements. These are our local arterials in the neighborhood streets. Want to move on now to make sure to touch on our role with economic development. We are investing in working families and support for vulnerable businesses. And we know that this year has pulled back the curtain on how fragile our economic system is. We are working with Greater Portland Inc., who is our partner, on a regional recovery. It's a five-year plan on where we can make smart investments to make sure the region is able to come back, and we do it with an equity lens. Then the last thing I want to talk about is our housing work. This is a priority because it is such a crisis. It is also the most recent set of responsibilities given to Metro through the voters. In 2018, voters approved our affordable housing bond measure, which was designed to build housing for more than 12,000 people in the region within the decade. And we have great news on the progress of that measure. So far, we've committed 34% of the resources in order to meet 54% of the goals. So that means we are tracking well ahead and the progress on that measure, and we will be able to house even more people. We are more than halfway to our goal in terms of what's in the pipeline and being developed. And I look forward to figuring out if we can set a new goal, a new, more ambitious goal, to make sure that we're meeting what we know is quite the crisis. Hundreds of people will have the stability of new housing just within the year, but we've got to keep the pressure on. And Gladstone is definitely a leader there because you've got the pilot project for Clackamas County within your city limits. And I know that's going to be really good, not only demonstration that this works and that Metro can make sure that the funds are efficiently spent with Clackamas County, but also that the housing can help stabilize folks and community. Wanted to also touch on the supportive housing that goes hand-in-hand, but is a different program. So our supportive housing measure just passed a little bit less than a year ago. It was last May's election. And we know that the crisis on our streets in downtown Portland is really different than what we see in the needs of our friends and neighbors in Clackamas County. That's why this measure was designed so that Clackamas County comes up with its own plan, its own priorities, and spends some money on supportive housing services here in Clackamas County that are going to look different than the ones in downtown Portland. Clackamas County is currently in the process of finalizing their plan to bring it forward to Metro so that we can start that work, I believe, July 1, the start of the new fiscal year. So again, a year ago, voters across the region passed the supportive housing program measure. It's been a good partnership, and I'm working hard to make sure that we can deliver on services that make sense for Clackamas, and it's not all downtown Portland-driven. That's been my priority from the start. I know that we've got a long way to go in making sure we can do the services at scale, but we do have the ability to help people who are chronically homeless. If we do give them caseworkers, if we do make sure that they have job training, drug and alcohol treatment, all of those things go together with housing to help bring somebody the stability that they need. And then the last area is parks and nature, and that's really fun and good work that is underway to make sure that we are protecting this. We're stewards of the land that's under Metro control, but we're also a good partner with municipalities. In particular, the measure that passed in 2019 includes local share dollars. So those are dollars for parks that go straight to cities and other parks providers in the region. And, you know, finally, in news for Metro Parks, Newell Creek Canyon Nature Park will be opening later this summer or fall just over in Oregon City. So that's been a master plan coming to fruition slowly and surely over the past couple of years. I've covered a lot of ground, probably a little faster than I should have, but I'm happy to answer questions, note things that are of interest to you, and hear about what you're working on that I can be helpful or lend support to.
Great, thank you. Counselor Tracy, any questions?
None for me, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Lewis, for the presentation.
Always good to see you, Counselor.
Counselor Garlington.
None for me. I would just, I'd like to read up on some more of this. I think it's really great information. I thank you for taking time out tonight to come and see us.
Yeah, thank you. And contact me if you have questions after your reading.
Counselor Ripley.
I don't have any questions, and thank you for your time.
Counselor Todd.
I have nothing. Thank you very much.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions. Thank you, Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Alexander.
I did. Thank you for your time. I mean, you don't have anything to do with the I-205 tolling, do you?
I don't, other than just like everybody else, I have an opinion, and I've got a more elevated voice than a lot, so I try and use it.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. First, thank you for not taking a one-size-fits-all approach to all of these programs, because like you said, Clackamas County is very different from Multnomah County and Washington County. Very much appreciated. One of the things that you offered when I first became mayor was a behind-the-scenes tour of the zoo. Are you going to offer that again? Because all of you counselors, it was so much fun. It was pretty darn cool.
I don't know where we are with our cycle on that. I know we missed what was planned to be a really cool one last year, but I will make sure that we do that again and invite all of you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night, all.
You, bye. All right. Jackie, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, I have nothing.
All right, next is the consent agenda. And before somebody makes a motion, I would like to pull item number six for discussion. And unless there's anything else that needs to be pulled, could someone make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through five?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through five.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Tracy to approve consent agenda items one through five. Any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, thank you. The reason that I wanted to pull the department head reports was because of something that I read that is incredibly disturbing, and I'm not quite sure what we need to do about it. And that's under the Police Department, pages 6-24 and 6-25, which are the detective's monthly report. I'm not sure if any of you looked at it closely, but this is what one of the detectives reports. The new cases assigned, two are both juvenile sexual assaults. Recurrent caseload rape, encouraging child sexual abuse, rape two, juvenile sexual abuse, purchasing sex with a minor, rape, juvenile sexual assault, juvenile sexual assault. And the other detective's report is very similar. I was shocked knowing that this is happening here in Gladstone. And we, as a council, I'm not sure what we can do about it. We are having a joint meeting with the school board next month, and I don't know if this is something that we should talk about in the school board meeting. Hopefully, it's on their radar. I don't know. What do you guys think? Does that seem fair that we... We need to discuss it. This is absolutely gut-wrenching that this is the primary cases that our detectives are working on. Counselor Alexander.
Yeah, I think, I think any education to the community, school board, everybody, as much as you can get out there to keep everyone aware and keeping an eye out on this.
Yeah, I don't know what we can do, but we have to be able to do something. Counselor Garlington.
I'm going to agree with Greg. I just, I really think that we need to hear as much as possible, learn as much as possible, and figure out a plan of how we can help, because we just, you can't turn your back on it. You just can't. There's just absolutely no way. A child in need is top, should be top of the list for the entire community. So I hope that we can do something about it, and if nothing else, at least learn more about it at the joint council meeting from possibly someone who's got time to give us a short presentation or a long presentation or whatever they feel we need to hear in order to know exactly what's going on and what can be done. Thank you.
City Administrator Betts, is this something that we could have the Police Department give us a little bit more information on it? Or how would you suggest we proceed with this?
Well, there's a couple thoughts here. One, I understand your statement. It is appalling, and you're calling it out, attention. Names are not shown in this for obvious reasons. I do believe it's something that we could jointly talk about to the school board. It's not that the school board or the city council has the authority to change it, but I do think awareness and education is important in trying to understand during this pandemic, when all of these people are at home, why these types of crimes are becoming prevalent. So I certainly think that we could have it on our agenda with the school board, and maybe the police chief would like to give a little summary of these events.
Okay, so thumbs up. Is that all right with all of you that I have that put on the agenda with the school board? I see heads nodding. Okay, great, thank you. So then I need somebody to make a motion to approve item number six, please.
So I'll make the motion, Mayor, but I'd also, I think, going back to Chief or to Administrator Betts, I think, I'm looking at this, I'm wondering, obviously, we need some context here. We don't need names, but some context to understand if some of these cases are cases involving the same incident or same individuals, that may be cases that were brought forward by the DA or charges that were brought forward by the DA. There's, I mean, this without context is just, it really doesn't say much. So I agree, we need some context here. I don't know what the school board can do for us, Mayor. That's my question is that I just picked up an article where schools right now are, as first reporters or mandatory reporters, they're starting to see spikes. And I think even in our packet, we were seeing some information about this. They're starting to see spikes because the kids are coming back to school, so they're starting to become more aware of some of these incidents that are taking place over the last year and obviously recently in our own town. I guess my first thing is we would need context before going to the board. I'm not sure if the school board, I mean, I'm not sure what they're going to do. I think maybe we just have conversations at the city first, unless you're just looking for a public awareness campaign.
Basically, that's where I would like it to start.
Okay.
Yes.
But the context would be helpful for any of us having to make a decision about it, I believe.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, Counselor Todd.
Yeah, I was just going to piggyback off of that. I agree with Counselor Tracy on, you know, having more contacts and being able to... I'm pretty sure that the schools also are being made aware of this, if these are their students. So there's a public awareness part of it that I think is great. You just hadn't polled everybody, so I was just making sure that, I wanted to give my two cents on that was that I'm for it as mostly a public service type thing where we can get that out there. Thank you.
You need to start that. All right, would somebody make a motion, please?
Counselor Tracy made the motion, I think. I'll second it.
Yeah, so moved, sorry.
Okay, Counselor Tracy made a motion to approve consent agenda item number six, and Counselor Alexander seconded. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman. Mayor Stempel.
Yes, consent agenda item number six has passed. Is there any correspondence?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, so a couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was due today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Except for during our public hearing, we'll allow public speaking without having noticed us ahead of time, but again, it's three minutes. Second, as I do before every meeting, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to participate in this process. We will have your phones muted until it's your time to speak. And if we're not able to mute, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep these meetings respectful and engaging, and I hope all of you can help do that. So the first item is number seven, Resolution 1192 to implement a Meldrum Bar Park parking fee for non-residents. Staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For this item, you will be considering implementing a parking fee at Meldrum Bar Park. I know this is a conversation that we've had for the last several years, but if you will allow me an opportunity to provide some background and context before we get into what we're actually asking the council to adopt tonight. The city of Gladstone owns and maintains Meldrum Bar Park, a prominent park and boat ramp on the Willamette River. Operation, maintenance, and services of Meldrum Bar Park depend on funding from the city of Gladstone. Meldrum Bar Park is located in Gladstone, Oregon, and provides access to the Willamette River. The park spans over 85 acres and has amenities in addition to river access, including baseball, soccer fields, picnic tables, a walking path, community gardens, and a wetland area. The park has over 150 parking spots open year-round, as well as overflow parking areas that can be used during periods of high visitation. Entrance to Dahl Beach is at 15.33-acre City of Gladstone Riverfront Park on the Clackamas River. It's accessed via Meldrum Bar Park Road. In previous years, Gladstone parks were subsidized by enterprise funds. In order to operate within budget constraints, there has been a decrease in park spending and an associated decline in the quantity and quality of amenities at Meldrum Bar Park. Without additional funds, infrastructure and services... Without additional funds, infrastructure and services at Meldrum Bar Park are likely to continue to be underfunded. In September of 2017, the city council approved the Gladstone Citywide Parks Master Plan, which included implementation of parks' utility fees to facilitate funding for ongoing park operations and maintenance. To help abate the decline in park funding, the Park and Recreation Board of Gladstone has proposed implementing a parking fee at Meldrum Bar Park. A parking fee could help make Meldrum Bar Park more financially self-sufficient by generating revenue from parking permits. The revenue could then be spent on park services and operation and maintenance. These expenditures are currently funded by the City of Gladstone's General Fund. In 2019, Echo Northwest completed a feasibility study for the City of Gladstone, which determined implementation of a parking fee at Meldrum Bar Park would generate revenue for parks' operations and maintenance. In June of 2020, the Gladstone Park and Recreation Advisory Board and the Gladstone City Council held a joint work session regarding the parking fee. They discussed and recommended implementation of a Meldrum Bar Park parking fee to non-residents to generate revenue for parks' operations and maintenance. The specific recommendation is three dollars per day or forty dollars annual pass. All Gladstone residents will receive one annual pass per household. In July 2020, staff worked with the city attorney to review twenty-one title deeds related to the Meldrum Bar Park parcels to make sure there were no restrictions on implementing a fee. We also had them review the current agreement between the Community Gardens and the City of Gladstone to make sure there were no restrictions on implementing the fee. None were found. Since that time, staff has been working on logistics of the location of the pay station and any site prep required. COVID impeded our process from getting the machine in place any sooner. We have kept all user groups informed of this process and engaged in a public outreach forum to prepare educational materials. The next step in the process is for the city council to implement the fee into the master fee schedule. And now I'm going to have our Acting Public Works Director Darren Canaparoli go over a few PowerPoint slides to show you the location and what the fee station looks like.
Thank you, Jackie. So in this picture here, you can see the location of where the fee station's going to be located. It's not a very good picture. It would have been nice to have been zoomed in a little bit, but it kind of shows the, the location and some of the markings and everything that's going to be associated with this. This is the initial stage of this. There is future planning to add more lanes in this, but with the timing of everything and trying to get the station installed as quickly as possible, this is the best that we could do in a short period of time. New page slides.
Darren, if I could also add that if the city council can recognize that open space property, that is where the city would eventually like to expand to have two lanes with fee stations there. However, in our initial assessment of this, it was determined that that property is zoned multifamily. So in order for us to expand our fee station, the city council may want to recommend, as we go through this Meldrum Bar Park site plan, that the city rezone that property to allow us to expand that in the future. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. So this is a little closer up version of basically the location. It doesn't have all the drawings of all the markings and everything. The reason that this area was selected was it keeps us out of the floodplain. If we get into the floodplain, it endures a lot of extra cost and time to be able to put that station in. And then also with the room there to be able to expand when, when possible to make more room for another fee station. Next slide. So this is a picture of the fee station. This fee station arrived last Thursday. It's at Public Works currently. This fee station was ordered in February. There was a huge delay due to COVID. We had to get the fee machine ordered as soon as we could to be able to implement this fee station going in. Next slide, please. So this is a picture of the annual pass, and it'll be very similar, if not the same, for the resident pass. The idea is you will put your, slide your pass card in the machine. It will print out a ticket. The ticket will go on the dash of your vehicle, and that's what the, the, what you'll get out of the machine as far as a parking pass. This, putting this on your dash is not going to count as an actual parking pass. Next slide. So this is the backside of the pass, the annual pass slash resident pass. We had instructions put on the back of the pass so that it would help people, especially first starting out, how to go about using the machine. There's instructions on, not only on the back of the pass, but there's instructions at the machine that will have, show people how to go about using the machine. It's a very simple process. You scan your card for the annual pass or your credit card. You select which option you want to have, whether it's the three dollar daily pass or you can also purchase an annual pass out of the machine. If you purchased the annual pass out of the machine, you'll also get a paid parking pass so that you can, or parking ticket, I guess is probably the best way to put that, that you can put on your dash so that you don't have to keep your annual pass or your resident pass on the dash. It could be taken by somebody if somebody so wanted to. Another thing I wanted to point at the bottom of this, there is a cost to replace the card at five dollars. That's for the annual pass, and I also believe that is for the resident pass as well. That's all I've got on that. So as Jackie stated, there was analysis that was done by Echo Northwest that provided three primary costs associated with the implementation of the parking fee. You have the technology costs, which is, is what you see down below in the cost impact. You have the enforcement cost. That's the cost that it's going to take for enforcement by the police department. And then you have the loss of grant funding. The grant funding is, is the MAP or Maintenance Assistant Program that we get through. It's ODF. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, sorry. They get fifty-four hundred dollars a year from that. With implementing this, that will decrease that amount that comes in, depending on how much is charged for the, the parking fee. In the study, it says that there will be a ten to fifteen percent reduction in that, which equates to about eight hundred and forty dollars that we will lose. But the revenue that we will receive with the parking fee will outweigh that by multiple, multiple dollars. The, the city has forecasted a yearly increase over the next two years of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year to the parks' budget with the implementation of this fee.
Great. Anything else, Jackie?
No, we are available for questions. What's next is the resolution to be considered for adoption.
All right, I'm going to call on everybody individually to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Counselor Tracy.
It's a long time coming. Change is hard for folks, but I think this is what we need for the city and certainly for our parks program. So I'm, I'm behind it.
Great, thank you. Counselor Garlington.
I only had one question. The operating costs of approximately fifteen hundred dollars, is, is that a percentage of the amount collected or a flat fee?
No, that is, that is a flat fee for all the software and everything that it takes to run everything with a machine.
Okay, that's all, and thank you for all of your hard work. I appreciate it.
Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any questions.
Great. Counselor Todd?
No, I know Parks Board worked really hard on this. Multiple iterations of Parks Board members have worked on this. And change is hard, but first and foremost, I think that we need to be responsible to our residents. And parks are very important to our residents. I've been here at time and time again. So I, unfortunately, for those that aren't happy about it, I'm sorry, but I'm for it as well.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question on the public outreach. Is there money budgeted in that to make sure that when we're doing our outreach that there will be language translation for Spanish or Russian or any other languages besides English?
Thank you, Counsel Hartman. I just verified today with our firm that they're able to convert to Spanish. So that will be our preference to do the conversion of the public outreach into Spanish.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, I'm the same as everyone else. I understand that that change is hard. You know, but I think that this will only make Meldrum a better place to visit once we have revenue coming in. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Counsel Alexander?
Yeah, so I knew this was coming, so I spent a few hours down at Meldrum Bar today. I talked to a lot of people. I had some interesting observations on it. One of the things I had a question I'd like to ask anybody. Does anyone else, can anyone else show me another city that has a parking fee? Not a boat ramp fee, but a parking fee for their parks? Does anyone know of another city that, that charges people to park at their parks? Because I didn't find one. Today, the conversations I had, nobody knew about that. They knew about boat ramp fees, and this is not a boat ramp free fee, and they'd rather it be a boat ramp fee. But does anyone know of that? I mean, I believe we'll see a decrease in people using it in the future. All of them told me today, well, if I come here and I've got to pay three dollars, you'll just see me across the river there at Clackamas Park. So I don't know how much we'll be losing, how much our businesses will be losing. You know, people are eating Subway, Taco Bell, Burgerville. They work at Toyota Gladstone there. They take their lunch down there, and they said, I'm not paying three dollars to eat my lunch. So I don't know, are we going to decrease things more? I mean, so not as many people show up and the people that live here free get the one pass? And, and you know, I'll meet, meet your wife or your husband down there. We'll let the other kid with the pass take the younger kid to the soccer game. Well, now, the wife's got to pay three dollars, the husband's got to pay three dollars to get in the park to watch their kid play. You know, they said, couldn't we, couldn't more people get a pass? And, you know, so I, there's, there's just a lot of moving parts on this one for me. And I, and I've got a list right here of names that I've talked to, and it's, it's over sixty people. And so I, I don't know, they're just not feeling it. So I guess I'm not either. Could anyone ask that question, answer that question? Does anybody know?
I was gonna, Counselor Alexander, I was gonna answer your question, if I may.
Okay.
So in your packet on page seven eighteen, we did put in parking fees in the regional parks. To answer your specific question regarding other cities, as part of this process, the Oregon State Marine Board required that we notify our neighboring cities that we were going to put in this parking fee. We did that with Westland, Milwaukee, and Oregon City. And the feedback that I received was, I wish we thought of that ourselves. So no, there aren't any neighboring cities that have that. They'd like to explore it as well. You may see a decline for a while, but typically we expect that to come back as well. And we really want to make sure that we're educating people that this is for non-residents only, that the residents will be able to get an annual parking pass. So I hope that clarifies a little bit of your question.
And that would be only one, say, four members, four drivers, four cars in the house, so only one pass, though, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Will someone make a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1192, implementing a three dollar per day, forty dollar annual pass fee at Meldrum Bar Park as proposed.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington, seconded by Counselor Todd, to approve Resolution 1192. Any further discussion?
I would just like to thank the staff for the leadership in this project. And when the Parks Board, including myself, wanted to move full speed ahead, you made sure our Ts were crossed and our Is were dotted. Thank you also for fielding the calls and the emails this last week to concerned park visitors. Your clear information and concise explanations were much appreciated. This project has been in the works for more than two years. So this, to the staff from many past, current, and future park board members, we thank you.
All right, so I guess before we do a roll call vote, Tammy, is there anyone that would like to speak in the audience?
Mayor, I did not receive any requests to speak on this matter, but I do show there, we did receive some correspondence that was forwarded onto the council, and I do now show that there are two hands requesting to speak.
All right, go ahead and introduce the first one, and again, it's three minutes.
The first will be Marty Loeb. Marty, you should be able to unmute yourself.
There you go. Thank, thank you, everybody, for, for this opportunity. I'm Marty Loeb. I am the Executive Director of the Children's Force and the first T of Greater Portland. And as you know, our property butts up right next to Meldrum Bar Park. Seven days a week, our maintenance crew accesses our property through, through Meldrum Bar Park on twelve, twelve months a year. All of our programming is accessed through the park as well. So there are, I'm trying to look here, thirteen hundred and sixty visits through the park we project this spring. So in order, if our participants have to pay three dollars to park, we do not have the budget for it. Our parents cannot afford it. Eleven percent of our participants, we scholarship. Ten percent of our participants are Gladstone residents, and we provide a great, great service to the City of Gladstone. In addition to that, we just, as you all know, we just built an incredible building that is a service to the City of Gladstone where kids can go and drop in, get mentorship, learn life skills. So I would like the city to consider a provision that we have access to the park. You know, we have events back there. We do park back there. The parking lot that is adjacent to our gate, is that being considered for, for, for the parking as well? There's only like, I don't know, fifteen spaces, maybe twenty spaces back there? Is that? Can someone answer that question?
We haven't discussed that, no.
Okay, and then several times, we park along the shoulder of the road right there as well, when we have overflow parking. So I'm assuming that wouldn't be a fee because it's on the shoulder of the road.
Anybody parking in the park will have to pay a fee. If you are driving through or dropping off or picking up, you're not required to get a parking pass.
Okay. Okay, so when we have events, because we have no parking up front for the golf course, so when we have events, then each person will have to pay three dollars.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. That's very disappointing.
Right, thank you very much, Marty. All right, next?
The next is Bill Osborne. Bill Osborne, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Uh, first off, and they were talking about potentially buying the land next to it that's zone multifamily. I think we all know with the housing crisis that, uh, nobody's gonna take the few plots of developable land that we have here in Gladstone and rezone it that's currently at multifamily. Secondly, you know, we, we talked about the parks and all this, and, and even I heard three of the counselors talk about change, but this is no change because squeezing residents and people for money is, you know, that's, that's something that, uh, is not new here. We have the, we're matched the highest property taxes in the state. We have one of the highest water bills around now. Uh, we have the privilege fee or privileged tax on all of our utilities. So the city keeps pulling in more and more money. Over the years that I've been paying attention, the, the budget is just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So obviously, the city has more money than they used to. Fees like this really weigh heavy on families, uh, families especially that are not well off financially. They have nothing but the park. As a father of six children, I know, especially when my kids were young, the park was about all we could afford to do. Go there, maybe have a barbecue or eat some sandwiches. So charging this fee is, is going to hurt people of lower income. And the other thing is the bottleneck that it's gonna create there. Uh, also, how many people are gonna park on our streets blocks away? Is that, that's gonna create a, a mess around the businesses and maybe even across McLaughlin and the residential, increased pedestrian traffic across McLaughlin, which could end in accidents or fatalities. And we're in the middle of the COVID epidemic. I mean, is there gonna be somebody sanitizing this machine in between every user? There's just a lot of things that don't make sense on this. Uh, the one pass per family also is problematic because we do have families here that have multiple people. And, and yeah, if you, if I'm down gardening and I need somebody to bring me something, having to pay a three dollar fee to do that just seems absurd. Um, so, anyway, I, I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this, but this just doesn't make sense other than one more way for the city to squeeze people for more money. So, uh, thank you for letting me have some input.
Thank you very much. So I had a couple things. First is, we have a lot of parks. This is just one of our parks. So we're not telling people that to go to any of our parks, they have to pay a three dollar fee. It's just Meldrum Bar. The second is a concern with Marty Loeb, who has a wonderful program, but the fact that it's a private business that is using our parks for all of their parking needs, that's a little bit concerning. Um, nothing that we can do about it now, but I, I don't think we allow other businesses to do that. So that was a little concerning. Um, anybody else have any comments? I don't see any. Oh, Tracy, Counsel Todd, excuse me.
Um, not a problem. Um, so in, in the scenario like Ms. Osborne was talking about, where he'd be working at the, the gardens and needed somebody to bring something down. If you're not leaving your car, if you're driving through, you're not leaving it unattended, you're not parking, then the pass is not required, correct?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure. If you live in the city and you're paying, as he said, these very high property taxes, you're also not paying because you're paying via your property tax for this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, I, I know, but nobody wants to pay three dollars. Nobody wants to pay anything. It's just, it's how it is. I, I understand. Um, I am concerned about the children's courts also. I mean, I don't know why we don't have something in play that is some sort of working, you know, agreement with them. Um, but unfortunately, as city counselors, I believe that we are beholden to our residents, and our residents are not going to actually be that affected by this. It's actually people coming in and using our parks that don't live here, that don't pay the property tax. So I just wanted to make sure that's very clear. If you're driving through, you're dropping your kid off at practice, maybe, you know, your, your parents that don't live together, somebody lives somewhere outside the, the area, you're dropping off your kid at a practice, it's not, it's not this big gate that's gonna come down and not let you in. So that's all I just wanted to clarify, because I know we've talked about it. I just don't know if the community understands it that well. So, thank you.
Counsel Hartman.
Thank you. Um, do we by any chance know what the financial impact would be if we did allow two passes per house? I'm just curious if we, I, I didn't ask that question ahead of time, so I'm sorry if you don't have those numbers, but how, how terrible would that be?
I think that you're looking at cutting our projected revenue in half by doing that. When we originally did the Echo Northwest Study, they were projecting revenue to charge the residents and non-residents. And so our recommendation is to do one annual pass per household. You can certainly reevaluate that from year to year if you want to, but I think to offer two now would still cut our revenue down to at least half.
Okay, yeah, because I guess two hundred and fifty thousand divided by forty is six thousand two hundred and fifty passes. So we're anticipating that some of that will come from our residents and out and non-residents?
That could be. Some residents may choose to buy passes just to have them. Um, but this first two years that we're doing, it is unknown on how much revenue. We did the best calculations we could by subtracting a portion of, uh, the population to do that.
That's all, thank you.
All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Alexander.
I'm gonna go no.
Counselor Ripley.
With reservation, yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
I'm very torn as well, but I'm gonna go yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, thank you. Resolution one one nine two has passed, and again, staff, thank you for all of the work that you put into this. This, this was a heavy lift. We appreciate it. All right, next is a public hearing for ordinance one one five one, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, Chapter ten point oh four, to regulate parking upon public property PPP controlled by the city. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For this agenda item, I'm going to ask Police Chief Schmerber to walk you through the ordinance amendment.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you. With the Gladstone City Council approval of the parking fees at Meldrum Bar, the police department is prepared to do the enforcements on fee restrictions, and I'll be able to answer questions after this if you have any directly towards the enforcement piece. Um, however, to do so, we require an amendment to ensure our legal authority to do so. Um, although we currently have, uh, parking ordinance, it doesn't necessarily address Meldrum Bar and the parking fees. So what we're asking for is more of a general, a general amendment to the ordinance, which would also allow, uh, which would allow, excuse me, uh, general restriction recommendations would allow council to set parking fees and impose future, uh, restrictions without having to come back to council, uh, to make an amendment. So this is more of a general, a general amendment that would, uh, give us authority for Meldrum Bar, plus in the future, if council decides that they want to pursue parking in another area that's public property, that we would be able to implement that without another amendment. So, uh, asking, so the proposal essentially is amending, uh, Section ten point zero four point two three zero, uh, prohibited certain vehicles and places, and add subsection three that would state, no operator shall park in, and no owner shall allow motorized or non-motorized vehicles to be parked upon public property controlled by the city in a manner that violate the posted parking restrictions, meaning the signage that would be at Meldrum Bar or anywhere else in the city, without paying any required fee with that, and C, without displaying the required permit or receipt, which is, goes in line with the parking fee station. When you have, uh, when you have the receipt upon the windshield. So that's essentially the ordinance itself and the amendment to the ordinance. Uh, and in order for us to enforce, we would need the amendment approved.
All right, since this is an ordinance, it requires a public hearing, so that, um, because of that, we have to do a first and second reading, so this is the first pass on it. Um, did somebody have a question? I just heard somebody. No, I'm gonna call everybody individually. Um, Counsel Tracy, any questions or concerns?
None for me, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Counsel Garland.
None for me, thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I don't have any questions.
Counselor Todd.
None, thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
No questions, thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Alexander.
Just real quick, um, so we, we approve this, they go down, they cite somebody, the ticket gets paid. Does that go to the Parks Department? Does that go to the Police Department?
So, that's a good question. Uh, Counsel, good question. The city parking ticket revenue is processed through the court system, through municipal court, as, as other, it's like other related, uh, fines, and distributed back to the city and support one of the police and a court general fund department cost. So, um, that's exactly where the money would, would be generated to.
Okay, there's a lot, and a lot of these, they say cost impact. It always says cost associated with the ordinance amendment is staff time, you know? And so we pay, you know, I just wonder where that money, that comes out of that and so forth, correct?
Yes. And, and to answer some more of your question, it will be, it'll be the police department's responsibility for random patrols down there and getting out and, and checking and, and making sure that the, the tickets and permits are, are valid. So that, um, there'll be a lot of staff time for us and different officers, mostly impacting days and afternoon watch and our code enforcement, so.
So there probably won't be any overtime involved with this, doing this, right?
Okay. I don't anticipate any over.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, since this is a public hearing, Tammy, do we have anybody that wishes to speak in the audience?
I show that there are two hands up.
All right, well, the first, please.
First is Natalie Smith. And she should be joining and should be able to unmute. Natalie, can you unmute yourself? Okay, we'll move on to Bill Osborne.
I just had a couple of quick things on this. Uh, one, I was wondering if the cost was factored into the revenue you expect to bring, uh, in from these, uh, parking passes? Because, you know, our police officers, they, they make decent money and they have a more important job to do than play meter maid, which brings me to the, the second issue is, on the weekends and off hours, we only have two officers on duty in Gladstone. So is one gonna be down there writing parking tickets instead of patrolling the streets or, uh, watching for, you know, drunk drivers or reckless drivers or, or other dangers through the city? I, I mean, I understand that this ordinance will probably pass because it needs to just enforce the stuff, given the previous one did, but I was just wondering if this has been looked into and what kind of cost this is gonna have to detract from the money from the revenue, as well as, is the city gonna be safe while, uh, half of our police force is down there writing tickets potentially? That's all I have.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chief Schmerber.
No, I didn't know if I'm supposed to answer that question.
Yeah, go ahead, if you'd like.
Yes, um, so yes, police officers are gonna be down there. It's gonna be random, uh, especially on the weekends. Uh, we don't anticipate, uh, we anticipate getting through the parks, hopefully twice a shift, but at least once a shift. And we're gonna evaluate this for the first year, whether it's, if we're capable, the Gladstone Police Department is capable of performing those acts, because we do have a priority of maintaining public safety, which I feel we're very good at, and we want to maintain that. So, um, we're gonna continue doing that, but I believe we can, we can make this happen, and if not, we'll, we'll go to Plan B, which is, I have other options available to me, and I'll look at.
Right, um, is Natalie Smith available? Tammy?
I don't see that she ever came on if she wants to, um, speak. Would you raise your hand again, Natalie, and I'll move you over? I don't show that she's raising her hand.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to, um, approve or not approve ordinance one five one one.
I make a motion to approve ordinance one five one one, amending Section ten point zero four point two three zero of the Gladstone Municipal Code to regulate parking upon public property controlled by the city.
I second.
Motion was made by Counsel Garland, seconded by Counsel Alexander to approve ordinance one five one one. Any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, this was unanimous, so we can go ahead and do the second reading. Um, do we have any further discussion on this? I don't see anything. Would somebody please make a motion to approve ordinance one five one one as the second reading?
I make a motion to approve ordinance one five one one, amending Section ten point zero four point two three zero of the Gladstone Municipal Code to regulate parking upon public property controlled by the city.
I second.
Motion was made by Counsel Garland, seconded by Counsel Alexander to approve ordinance one five one one as the second reading. Any further discussion? I see none. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor, Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, ordinance one five one one has passed. Next is item number nine, Clackamas Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Work Project Contract. Staff. You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are very excited to bring this high visible sewer pump station project to you tonight for consideration. I'm going to have our acting public works director, Darren Canaparoli, walk you through the staff report.
Thank you, Jackie. Yeah, before you deny to award the bid for the West, West Clackamas uh, sanitary sewer project. This project has been ready to go for a while, but was delayed due to COVID. The Public Works Department worked with SISL Engineering to develop a scope of work which entails replacing three hundred feet of sanitary sewer line as well as a hundred feet of water and storm line. This project will correct restricted flow that is in existing sanitary line, which will ultimately help the city in reducing future sanitary overflows into the Clackamas River. With guidance from DEQ, we have worked to identify and correct deficiencies in our system that have greatly reduced the frequency of sanitary sewer overflows. This project will help keep us from having future sanitary sewer overflows. The amount of this, this project is three hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-one cents. That is a do not exceed number. This, this, the monies for this will be distributed from the, uh, all utilities that will not, so it will not impact one fund entirely. Any questions?
Uh, Counsel Tracy, any questions or concerns?
No, I just, um, thank you, um, Director, Darren, Director. Um, there was a question I had. I guess, uh, I'm calculating this right. I think it's six hundred and ninety-one dollars per linear feet. Is that pretty close to what you have for this project cost? Cause you're looking at about five hundred linear feet of, of mixed conveyance. Is that correct, Darren?
Yeah, yes, that is correct. This is, the, the price on this is a little higher than we liked it to be. Um, a lot of that has to do with the depth of the, the lines that we're dealing with. We're dealing with lines that are, um, somewhere around twenty feet in depth.
Wow. Wow.
And the, the issue is, is there's not a lot of contractors that will do that type of work in that type of depth.
That makes a lot of sense, so thank you for that, I just was looking at the numbers and even on their mode costs, I mean, it seems like they're, they're doing some deeper work, but I didn't have any idea that it was that deep, so thank you, appreciate it.
You bet.
Counselor Garlington.
I don't have any questions, I just, thank you so much, it, it's, it was a clear report to read, and I appreciated that, thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Todd.
Um, I have no questions, but I also wanna thank you, Director, for being very clear and concise, it's, you know, sewers are so much fun to read about, but I made it through, and it made a lot of sense, thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Counselor Alexander.
Uh, I just think, this, these people we're gonna go the bid to, NTA, I think I asked just before, they're, they're, they're well versed in this deep, they're experts in this.
Yes, they, they have done multiple projects at this depth, and that is the reason that they were chosen.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, first, I'm so pleased to see that we're going with responsible bid, instead of just the lowest bid, because for a long time, that's how we operated, and that's why a lot of our roads and work are not done well, so thank you for that. And second, I had a concern that this was coming out of the sewer water and storm budgets, when I felt originally this was just a sewer project, but it's not, it's also going to be moving water and storm pipes, so that's why it's coming out of all three of those enterprise funds. Um, so I didn't have any questions, um, any other questions or concerns? Counsel Alexander.
Uh, just from what I understand, we've been collecting for this, right, so I mean, we've got some of the money already. Is that correct, or?
Yeah, that is correct, this, this is your, uh, the result of your utility fees that you pay in your utility bill. Um, we have the funds available for this, and for future projects as well.
Outstanding, and thank you for your time and effort on.
Counselor Tracy.
Could I ask one more question, so that's a great point, thank you, um, Director Canaparoli, uh, just, kinda ripping, what would be, the, what, what are the costs, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have to maintain this system as it sits, are we looking at, we're, we're obviously looking at deteriorated infrastructure, I mean, over the years, this cost could, could balloon, correct, Darren, I mean, if we're looking at doing this three to five years from now, I know that costs right now, construction costs are high, I mean, that, that cost for the same amount of work could be double that in five years, couldn't it?
Yes, very easily, and I think, I think it could be nearly doubled within a year with the way that construction costs are going right now.
Right, you're able to, you're able to nail in this thing on budget, and their overruns, they would work with you on any overruns, if you're looking at it for steel or anything like that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is, if we were to defer this again, we could look at 700 to $800,000, just in, within a few years, potentially, to do the same amount of work.
Quite possibly, yes.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I needed for an answer, thank you, sir.
And I think it's also important that this is helping reduce the sewer overflows into the river that we've been fined with by DEQ, so it's a very highly visible project that shows the residents where the utility rate increases are going. It's a great project for us to be highlighting in the community.
And DEQ has been very kind to us by not fining us like they could have, so we wanna make sure this stuff gets taken care of. All right, so would somebody make a motion then? To approve or not this contract? And it's written on page 9-2 for anybody that's brave enough to do it.
I will do my best, Mayor. Um, I, um, move that the City of Gladstone, City Council affirm that proper public work bidding processes were followed in the bidding of this project, and that the City of Gladstone, Oregon, City Administrator be authorized to sign a contract with NTA Contracting in the amount of $345,850.31 for West Clackamas Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Project.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman, seconded by Counselor Garlington to approve the contract, any further discussion? I don't see any hands, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Hartman. Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, so the Clackamas Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Work Project Contract has been awarded, thank you very much. Next is item 10, Title 17 Zoning Code, the Gladstone Municipal Code Rewrite Project Contract, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again, a project that we have been working on for four to five years now, is we're asking you to allow me to enter into an agreement for our consultants of choice, MIG, to do the Title 17 Zoning Code rechange. In the last several years, the City of Gladstone has undertaken several major initiatives relating to housing choice and to the revitalization of our downtown. Briefly, these include the Downtown Revitalization Plan from 2017, the Housing Code Audit in 2019, the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis in 2021, and the Housing Code Community Engagement Strategy of 2021. The state also adopted HB 2001 in 2019, and they are requiring that cities create more affordable housing choices by expanding the allowed densities in single-family zones. The city went out and did a request for proposals, in your packet, you will see that we received five responses. We also put together a selection committee that consisted of Mayor Tammy Stempel, Planning Commission Chair Michael Milch, Planning Commission Vice Chair Andrea Langston, Planning Commission Member Les Poole, and myself. We scored them first, and we did interviews next, and our consultant, John Southgate, facilitated the process and selection process. The selection that we have chosen is MIG, and we would like a not to exceed cost for this project of $80,000 to be allowed for me to enter into. We're very excited to work with Matt, John, and Sue, they are gonna have a customized approach for Gladstone, and they understand that how they communicate change in this town is important. So there are a lot of complicated issues to explain, and we're very excited to spend the next eight to nine months working through this project. Mayor Stempel, did you have anything to add on the selection?
It was a great process, all of the firms were very qualified. Um, I loved these, the enthusiasm from these people, as well as their tailored approach, which was nice. Um, and also they were the least expensive, which was even better, so it was kind of a, a really good package. Um, one of the things that, that I, I, one of the questions I was asked was, why do we have to hire a consultant to do a zone change, to, to do this rewrite? Um, nine years ago, when I was on Planning Commission, we were tasked with starting to relook and review the Title 17 section, and discovered right away that we, it, we were so far out of our wheelhouse that we, we just couldn't continue. Title 17 isn't just a regular code ordinance, this is something that comes down from the state, there's land use issues, there's, noticing, there's hearings, it's, it's so technical, you have to hire a consultant that does this for a living to be able to get this done right. So, that's why we have to hire a consultant, and these people were wonderful, so, um, anything else from staff?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right, so, um, Counselor Tracy, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Garlington, down there on the bottom.
I just have one question, um, on page 10, 3, on the fourth paragraph, it says, the funds will be expended from the period. I'm just wondering if there was a little bit more information.
Um, I don't see what you're referring to, but I will tell you that the funds are coming out of the Business Community Development Line Item, that is the line item in the Administration Budget, that is where we collect a percentage of the business license revenue and allocate it towards these projects, we do have the money readily available, we've been saving it for this project.
Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
Uh, no questions.
Counselor Todd.
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
And no questions, the only question I was getting was, why do we need to hire a consultant, so thank you, Mayor, for clearing that up, thank you.
Counselor Alexander.
None, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's strange to hear people so excited about code and zone ordinances, and these people were very excited about it. All right, um, I would entertain a motion then to award this contract.
So that would just be consider awarding a contract to MIG for consulting services for the Title 17 Zoning Code of the Gladstone Municipal Code Rewrite Project.
So, second.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander, and seconded by Counselor Hartman to award the contract, do we have any further discussion? I don't see anything, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, thank you, the MIG contract has been approved. All right, next is business carried forward.
I have nothing else tonight, thank you.
All right, next is business from the audience, and we have two people signed up to speak, and as a reminder, um, that the deadlines to accept comments were noon today, and that we allow three minutes, three minutes for public comment. Could you queue them up, please?
The first is Ann Jenkins.
Hello, my name is Ann Jenkins, my pronouns are she/her, and I am a Gladstone resident. Tonight, I would like to address the fact that Traffic Safety Advisory Board Member Bill Osborne created and shared completely false information related to the upcoming Gladstone School Board election in a Gladstone Facebook group twice this last week. The first false information post stated that Ginger Zimtbaum did not live in Gladstone, and that voters should consider a write-in for another candidate who is not on the ballot, and is not, quote, "catering to the current political groups whose protests have destroyed downtown Portland, and not going to be about abolishing the police or pushing special agendas," end quote. I immediately reported the post to the group moderator and to Facebook as false information relating to politics. I do not personally know Ginger Zimtbaum, but I read the voter's pamphlet, and nowhere in her statement does Ginger claim to be about abolishing the police or pushing special agendas. I also looked at her application to run for the Gladstone School Board, Position 2, and checked her home address, which is in Gladstone City Limits. From what I can find on the internet, Ginger is a Gladstone resident, mother and candidate who went through the trouble to run for a position she feels will better serve her community. I later learned that the mayor liked the first post made by Bill Osborne that spread false and misleading information related to this local election. I immediately emailed the mayor screenshots of the post and of her like on the post. She responded, unfortunately, social media is a platform the city does not control in regard to private citizen perspectives. Thankfully, the election will be over in a couple of days, have a great weekend, in an effort to brush me off. I then responded, Mayor, I fully understand that the city does not control social media, however, I do not understand why you would like and uphold false information posted by another city official on a social media platform in a group specifically designed for the city, where everyone knows you are the mayor. This does not instill confidence in me that my city government is taking false information or the posting of it by a city board member seriously, especially in regards to a local election. Will there be a discussion with Bill Osborne about this post? What kind of consequences from you or the council will there be for his posting of false information in his role as a member of the Traffic Advisory Board? I then quoted Oregon Statute 260 dot 3, 6, uh, 3, 532. No person shall cause to be written, printed, published, posted, communicated, or circulated any letter, circular, bill, placard, poster, photograph, or other publication, or cause any advertisement to be placed in a publication, or singly or with others pay for any advertisement with knowledge or with reckless disregard that the letter, circular, bill, placard, poster, photograph, publication, or advertisement contains a false statement of material fact relating to any candidate, political committee, or measure. The code does not specify that the person be an appointed or elected official. The mayor has never responded to my email. I am new to Gladstone, and I would like to be more involved in the city government, but this incident has disheartened me. As someone in the legal industry and with legal education, this greatly concerns me and offends my sense of justice. I would like to hear the mayor and council's answers to my questions about consequences and take the spreading of false information by an elected official seriously.
Thank you, time is up, uh, queue up the next one, please.
The next is Bill Osborne.
Hi, Bill Osborne, live here in Gladstone. I'd like to bring in light something that some on the council have tried to keep anything but transparent. This should have been public knowledge, but has been hidden from those who have also undertaken oath of service, and that was wrong. On July 16, Counselor Matt Tracy barged in the City Administrator's office, notably agitated. He shut the door behind him and began to verbally berate Jackie Betts, so loud that other staff not in the office were able to hear this misogynistic attack. This verbal attack left City Administrator shaken and unable to attend a scheduled meeting. The complaint states that it took 45 minutes before she could gather her composure enough to leave her office after this attack. Also in the complaint, it states, quote, "I felt that this was workplace intimidation as I was verbally being abused, and he was using his position to gain a professional advantage," end quote. Counselor Tracy was upset because a moderator hired by the city wasn't the right race. His white yolder, white savior complex apparently leads him to believe that if you don't have the correct skin color, then you aren't qualified enough, even though this moderator has worked for the city in the past. Counselor Tracy also repeated in a loud, agitated voice that he had an issue with a middle-aged, white man of privilege being hired. Ironic, given Counselor Tracy's part in the Frank Hernandez incident where numerous violations of Oregon public meeting laws were perpetrated to keep the council all white. Matt's supporter, one who sits on the council now, Tracy Todd, essentially called Mr. Hernandez a crybaby when he questioned if his race played a part in a lesser qualified and less recommended white man being appointed to the vacant position on the council over him. This isn't the first time Matt was disrespectful to women, when Mayor Stempel's sister posted on social media about the hateful eight, he essentially criticized the mayor for her sister having her own opinion and exercising her First Amendment. Matt Tracy has never had an issue when his supporters attacked the mayor, myself, or residents. Apparently, if someone posts truths about his friends, the city needs to spend more tax dollars to keep people from having their own opinions. I've seen and experienced Matt's temper firsthand as he's lashed out at me from the dais, along with other people, I would expect someone who served in the military to take an oath of service a little more serious. I think Matt owes Jackie a public apology, along with the residents of Gladstone, I think perhaps anger management may be helpful, too. Information like this needs to be public, not hidden from people, and I would also like to thank Lyndon Neese. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Did we lose sound, or is everyone just?
No, they're there.
I'm dialing my attorney.
Sorry, pardon, I got disconnected. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, so Counselor Tracy, is it gonna go first, uh, Counselor Garlington? Um, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. So Counselor Tracy is going to go first. Counselor Garlington.
Um, I just want to say, what are you asking me for? I'm sorry.
And we're doing business from the council.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, so I wanted to say that I was at the Senior Center Board meeting earlier in April. I really hope to see some great ideas come forth as we look forward to reopening our center in the not-so-near future. I attended the first meeting with the Clackamas County Library Advisory Board, who nominated Gladstone resident Natalie Smith to continue as the Clackamas County Library District Advisory Committee Representative. They will affirm this at the Board of County Commissioners. The group made other nominations to chair and vice chair. One of them, the chair is from the the other area, and then the vice chair is from the Gladstone area. So that was kind of nice to see that. They set future meeting dates, and we are working through a budget that they hope to pass at our May thirteenth meeting. And then I saw today, I just wanted to share good news. The Gladstone Library is now open to patrons ten to six daily. With limited capacity, face masks are required for anyone five and older. Enjoy the sunshine, everyone.
Counselor Ripley.
I know I said I was going to continue my talk from last week tonight, but I did not prepare my little math example of what I was talking about, so I will do that next week. Otherwise, I'm kind of at a loss of words after listening to some of these other comments about our counselors. I think I'm going to end it at that right now.
You said next week? You mean next camp?
Next month, next month.
Excellent, okay.
And my concern about some of the comments isn't about any of our counselors. It's about this stuff about these constant attacks on everybody and incorrect information given. It has to stop on these days. And we really need to try to figure out how to get along and work as a group here instead of either us always attacking somebody or somebody else always ducking over counselors. That's all I got to say.
All right, Counselor Todd.
I'm at a complete loss right now, so I'm probably not going to say what I want to say. And I agree with Counselor Ripley. Um, I feel like there needs to be a point where we don't have to agree on everything. We don't have to agree on most things. Um, but we need to be respectful of each other and not throw grenades at each other all the time. And I have concerns, too, a lot of concerns. So that's all I'm going to say right now.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the only thing I was going to bring is, kind of to let the community know, as well as all my fellow council members, I would like to propose that we add to the agenda next month a discussion on recognizing Juneteenth as an annual holiday. Last July, Clackamas County Commissioners adopted the establishment of Juneteenth as a holiday, and it's showing to be recognized for the first time this year. Then, just this past April, Oregon lawmakers in the House unanimously approved House Bill twenty-one sixty-eight to make it a paid state holiday. So I guess there really are two conversations that we might have to have. One, being us as a council and community recognizing the importance of Juneteenth to our Black community. And then number two, being prepared for the discussion, or maybe it's a financial impact at making this a city-paid holiday and us recognizing that. Personally, I've never gone through that motion, so I'm not really sure what goes into that. But I am happy to provide Administrator Betts and all of you as well copies of information, data, what Juneteenth is, if you're not familiar, and have her share that out to everyone in the council so that everyone is prepared to the next meeting. I personally am continuing to advance my education by attending trainings and seminars that focus on why we lead with racial equity and why transforming justice on levels is important so that I can understand, you know, other people's experiences and not my own experiences. So there's a lot of great work happening in our county. I'm really appreciative of that and a lot of great resources. So that's all. Hope everyone enjoys this.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander.
Yes, I'm going to start by agreeing with Counselor Ripley a hundred percent. We don't need to throw bombs. We don't need to have bombs thrown at us. So I'm going to just reference this. This, I'm going to hold it up. This is a letter. You can see where it's highlighted. This is from Ginger Zipbaum after our last city council meeting. And this is word for word from the council. So talk about, you know, I mean, throwing bombs, it says right here, Counselor, and I'm just, I'm not going to do this verbatim, just clips here. Counselor Alexander said, "We did not go through the proper channels, and that was why we were told we couldn't place signs on city property." Counselor Ripley said, "He said it needs to be done the proper way, and we should go through proper channels." Had nothing to do with me. Down here, she says, "Our school volunteers did not place those signs." And number three, she said, "I was one of the group of parents who helped the district by placing those signs." Number four, I mean, the letter was confusion over school signs. And so I am confused. I don't know if she was confused or we were all confused. But then it says, "Why the individual counselor said no to supporting our school district mostly flexed it and threw it onto code infringement." Well, I thought, I thought we were talking about that. All my nieces and nephews have gone through Gladstone schools, every one of them. My daughter went all through twelve years. I've always supported the schools. I still do. And I don't know how this got into why we don't support the schools, because here's the other one. Counselor Garlington, off the minutes, word for word, anyone can look these up. Counselor Garlington said she supports the schools one hundred percent. Counselor Alexander agreed. So I just, and then thank you to Counselors Todd, Tracy, and Hartman for their clear answers. Now, this is where I got confused. One of the answers from one of the counselors was, they said, "This is a question of posting the signs in city buildings." The other one said, "We are letting a lot of code enforcement issues slide." So what I'm thinking is, we were just talking about the signs, just this posting of the signs. I don't know, I don't want to say I'm offended or anything like that, but it's just, you know, I've supported the schools for over thirty years. My sister went there, my mom, my niece and nephew, so we've always supported the schools. I thought this whole letter and everything was about the sign placement. So, you know, I just, I just want to clarify. I do want to say to, I would like to say to Ginger Zipbaum, I do appreciate your time and effort for volunteering your time and supporting the schools. And I ran, obviously, and so, and you, you know, picking the steps to run and get involved. I admire that. I do. And I think competition is also healthy. So, you know, we supported someone else, but it's great for stepping up and doing that, and I appreciate it, and I just wanted to clear up any confusion. So I hope, I hope that makes it simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do have one more thing I got to say. That was really nice and touching. Might change the whole attitude. I text a Happy Mother's Day on Sunday, and I got some very, very nice comments from the community and some of the counselors sitting here right now. And so I just couldn't say enough. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'm good there for you, Greg. It was a tough day. All right, I'm last. As usual, I have quite a few things. The food pantry, as I've mentioned before, is now located at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off of Glen Echo in the portables at the back of the property. We continue to serve the GCCF and COVID quarantine families, as well as the homebound seniors, even though that program's still being worked on. We are currently open on Mondays for two shifts, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and it's a walk-up, drive-up model. The updated information is going to be on local social media sites, and you can contact our new director, which we're so excited about, if you have questions. Her name's Maddie McGillard, and it's M-M-C-G-A-L-L-I-A-R-D at NWFS.org, and her phone number is five oh three two zero zero eight three two one. Last night was the Parks Board meeting. We received an update on the Meldrum Bar fee station. We reviewed the budget. August staff is going to bring the sports fees and shelter rental recommendations to council. Sam Drevow and Kurt Dodinger, I think is how you pronounce it, with Energy Kayak, which is currently located at Sports Craft Marina, gave a presentation on a proposed partnership with the city on a park-and-float recreation opportunity, which would be from Cross Park to Doll Beach. The Parks Board recommended moving it forward to city council. It's not the Whitewater Park that I'm envisioning, but this is a start. The next Parks Board meeting will be an informal work session so that all of the new people can get up to speed on what their roles and responsibilities are. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is now shifting focus to the Climate Action Plan. It's going to be a county-wide effort so that all of the jurisdictions are on the same page. We're choosing representatives from both the rural and the urban areas. Nancy Bush, who some of you may know as the county's Emergency Operations Director, has been incredibly busy this last year. Well, now she's been promoted. She is now number two in the county, and hopefully we'll be working less hours. There's a new House Bill, through three zero six five, I believe, is what its title, being pushed by Tina Kotek that's going to refine House Bill two thousand and seventeen. Why that's important is that's the House bill that implemented potential tolling on I-205. We're not quite sure what the refinement is going to look like. They were in meetings pretty late last night, and I haven't heard from Paul Savis yet. So as soon as I do, I'll let you guys know. The June meeting is going to focus on the COVID recovery funds coming our way and how the cities and the counties can leverage funds on some joint projects. Clackamas County is back to a high-risk COVID level. In order to move to moderate, we're going to need to continue wearing a mask, washing our hands, social distancing, and quarantining if you have symptoms. Gladstone, as of May fifth, is now at four hundred and eighty-seven confirmed COVID cases, which is up seventy-three from our April thirteenth meeting and up nineteen from just last week. The vaccine availability is much better. A lot of the clinics are just walk-in, so you don't need to make an appointment, so that makes it a lot easier. As I continue to stress, every month, there's a lot of bad information out there on social media, so please go to credible sources for your updates. City, county, state, Oregon Health Authority, CDC, FEMA, and others will have the information you need. The city does not control, nor do they follow, the personal social media accounts, and the city doesn't police those accounts either, so that's unfortunate. There's a lot of stuff out there, but the city really needs to take a hands-off approach. Lastly, I want to repeat something I say at the beginning of every meeting because I want to make it crystal clear. In our decisions, we have to follow the rules and laws set by the federal government, the state of Oregon, the city of Gladstone's comprehensive plan, our city charter codes and ordinances. In fact, we all took an oath when we became your elected officials to do just that. We have to make decisions we can defend, and those have to be based on these set laws and rules. And to change them is not done randomly, and it's not done in a vacuum. Every piece that's changed impacts many others, and they all have to be reviewed. They all have to be changed to ensure that they're all consistent. This takes a significant amount of staff time, legal planning, and consultants, coupled with the noticing, the hearings, the public outreach, and in-depth justification on why we needed to make those changes. And all of these documents and discussions are available on, to the public, on all of the appropriate websites. And I would hope, before people create narratives where it is assumed we are targeting a group or an individual or have some hidden agendas, that they look at the rules so they know what it is that we have to base our decisions on. So that's all that I have, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington, seconded by Counselor Ripley to adjourn. Any further discussion?
I just had a quick question, Mayor. What was that House bill, the House bill you were referencing?
It is House Bill three zero six five. Yeah, three zero six five.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman. Counselor Tracy.
Yeah.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, meeting was adjourned at eight thirty PM. Thank you, everybody.